Educating, informing, serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
I want to order the meeting of the Brookline Select Board for January 22nd times 6:30 PM. First up is review changes. There are a couple of changes. Scheduled members of the public, Tom Statz and Sam Born will not be here this evening because we have decided to table 6A, the road commissioner appointment. We're going to table that until the March 4th reorganization meeting. I would also like to add, well Bruce would like me to add, under old business, we're going to add a 7D about road equipment.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Right? Right at the end of old business.
Okay. What was tabled?
Tabled 6A, road commissioner appointment. We're going to table that until March 4th, the normal reorganization meeting, basically, for the next year. Okay, any other changes?
Anybody see it?
Okay. Then moving, sorry?
We don't have to go over your blights for the rich take tonight.
Touch wood. Touch wood. This could be, I don't want to jinx anything, but this would be decent meeting. So scheduled members of the public, now there are none, other than our normal crew. Unscheduled members of the public, there are none. Next up is approving the minutes from the January 8th meeting. So January 8th, I have the file from this from DOT, so I'll make all the changes. First off, I have, I have all of the spellings of Lee Ann Gilson, the various places. I have, that's basically all I had on page one, was spelling changes to Lee Ann Gilson's name. Anybody else have anything else? Anyone have anything else on page one? Okay, on page two, down near the bottom, there's a Bruce Mello with a W that we'll fix. There's a Joseph Dutton, which is just sort of "and" is misspelled as well. I'll fix that. Anything other than that on page two?
Paragraph above, about the third sentence in. Mr. Dutton felt that the repair would be "dong" at the town as a service.
I assume that's what that's supposed to be. Okay. Good catch. Anything else on page two? On page three, Archie Clark will get rid of the E in his name. You're out. Able is A-B-L-E, isn't it? Able?
It is. I thought it was A-B-E-L-E. It is.
A-B-E-L-E. Okay. And either about the same. A-B-E-L-E. Okay. The paragraph up there at the top that starts David Jones, "thank the advisory," we'll make that committee instead of committing. Anything else on page three? Have anyone noticed? On page four, we'll make Shelley Shelby the town health officer. We'll make statues, statutes below that. Archie Clark with an E again. That was the only stuff I had on page four. Anything else on page four? Johnny Swing, make that possessive Johnny Swing, apostrophe S. Anything else on page four? Page five, down at the bottom, Bruce Mello with a W. The other thing I'll just change is the Wyndham Regional, under the agenda, the broadband meeting was January 16th, not 26th, so I'll change that. That was all I had on page five. And if you see anything else on page five? All right, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from January 8th as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any further discussion? I hear none. All those in favor of approving minutes from January 8th as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, so those are approved. Then moving on to new business. We've tabled 6A, the road commissioner appointments until the March 4th meeting. So that moves us on to building commissioner position. I made a fresh printout of the, it's the same one that we looked at before. Does anybody have any changes they'd like to suggest making?
Same identical thing. Sorry, it's the same identical one.
It's the identical one that we looked at, whatever it was, on the 18th of December. Yeah. I just printed new copies, in case people didn't have it.
He's good. No, Mark, I think I have.
Any changes anybody sees?
Yeah, I guess I'll wait for them. Thank you.
It's not a posting. It's a, yeah, it's basically, well, assuming we're, we don't see any changes, we'll be basically creating this position with this as the job description. Any changes that anybody sees to be made or would like to have made on the description at the moment? Or are we good with it as is? Of course, isn't to say down the road, we can't tweak it. We can change the description at any point if we find that there's whatever, something that we want to include or something we want to remove, but.
I feel like the, just this piece, the select board will involve the building commissioner in any discussions with building-related advisory committees were appointed appropriate or where appropriate. It almost feels like that's just kind of extra. Like it almost feels like that's imposing upon the select board and it doesn't really pertain to the job of the building commissioner. That is sort of pertaining to the job of the select board and imposing upon said job.
I guess the reason that I thought it maybe made sense to put that in was to slightly, to give a little bit of definition to what the relationship is between the building commissioner and any advisory committees. I don't know if it accomplishes that, but that was kind of, I think, my intention.
I think it could leave him because it just kind of gives a little more depth of what needs, the whole idea is. That it's not just something the bill, it's an involvement between the two.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I guess, right, I guess part of my thinking was that, I mean, I don't know. I can imagine there are times when the advisory committees and the select board are just working or just discussing directly things that don't exist and they, they might not necessarily involve the building commissioner. The building commissioner might not be involved in that or as other. It's more just sort of making it a little bit more clear that how much involvement the building commissioner may have with advisory committees is at the discretion of the select board. But maybe that was, maybe that is understood without needing to be stated.
Yeah.
You can say more appropriate.
That, I had the same thought as Bruce. You did point out where appropriate. But again, it almost, it just seems almost like, like extra and imposing upon the select board. But, you know, I don't, I don't think there's a problem.
In all fairness, the building commissioner, the road commissioner, anybody else that's appointed by the select board works for the select board. So in my interpretation is the building commissioner isn't on his own. That, that's, that kind of clears it up a lot. It's almost explaining the relationship.
Let's make Shelby put her drink on the way in.
Do I need to not be holding the drink for this?
We need to hold it splashy. No, so we're, so we're discussing the building commissioner, the draft of the building commissioner description. And Joseph has just raised the point of, in the third paragraph down, this, whatever, the second sentence, that says the select board will involve the building commissioner in any discussions with building-related advisory committees where appropriate. I think, I don't want the words in here to come out, but I think you're maybe saying that you think that's subherflous, unnecessary, perhaps. But then, I think both Gwen and Bruce, and to some extent myself, think perhaps it's just reinforcing something that may not be completely obvious without it. I mean, but, I don't know. What's your feeling, Shelby? To put you on the spot as you walked in.
It's just sip the green tea of the caffeine in again. It's too hot.
I think it makes sense. I do too.
I think it's just further clarification and clarification sometimes is a good thing.
Well, it's telling, it's kind of telling the select board that they, when they can, they should involve the building commissioner when they're discussing or making any decisions with any of the advisory committees. It's like, almost saying that the select board would be, it's like a trifecta in a way. This one, that one, and that one, working together, rather than suddenly the building commissioner not being included in a discussion that's related to stuff that's not on the building. I like, I like the words.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess a question could be, so if, and I, it's hard for us, maybe speculate on it, but you know, whatever. 20 years from now, if none of us are involved in this, and I'm pretty sure some of us probably want to be, but you never know, maybe.
Speak for yourself, Sonny.
Oh yeah, I was just talking about myself. I wasn't talking about this. If we, if we didn't have that line in it, would it change anyone's thinking about what the relationship of the building commissioner to the advisory committees was?
I just feel it should be left in.
Would it change anything? You start, just.
Well, I, I would agree. I don't necessarily think that the wording is particularly problematic. But one of the more questionable and sticky parts of the building commissioner in my mind is, what exactly is their relationship to the advisory committees? And that, I don't know if this set, this piece really clarifies that, and I'm not saying it needs to, that's just kind of one of the, that's pretty much the main outstanding question that I have about the position of building commissioner, is what exactly is their relationship with the various advisory committees?
To give advice.
I mean, what?
But it doesn't say why, he's got a point.
I think it, it's what the select board wants it to be and not.
That's right. And you want to say something, Shelby?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I kind of like, I think I like the intent of the sentence, but because it gets so specific to the point of mentioning advisory committees, but not mentioning like other conversations that, like, so the planning commission could approach the select board with something, but that would also be a conversation we'd want to invite. If it was related to buildings, we'd also want, so I think I like that that's there, but maybe it doesn't need to be specific. Maybe it could say something like, the select board will involve building commissioner in any discussions or planning meetings that are building-related where appropriate. You know, something that makes it very clear that like they should, that we should be inviting for. Yeah, that anything building-related, regardless of who else is involved in the conversation. Like just because, you know, we should, if we can help it, we should independently have those conversations because we really want it to be where we're having everyone involved. But the person who's actually boots on the ground and us is the larger, but not necessarily like narrowing it in so much as to focus on advisory committees for the buildings. And then we don't have to worry about what that specific relationship might be or grow to be between the advisory committees and the building commissioner.
And she's expanding it. I like that. But I think the one thing that you put into within that sentence is that if you, the building commissioner report directly to the select board. It switches it. It says the building commissioner reports to the select board. Because in that sentence, it's also saying the select board will include the building commissioner in all of the discussions. So it's like explaining the relationship between each of them together, depending on who's doing what. Can I make that clear? I didn't use a lot of that. Because at the beginning, it says, we're reporting to like, the building commissioner will directly to the select board. That's, that's pretty specific for whatever. But then it says the select board will involve the building commissioner.
It's two separate things.
Right, it sounds like the select board will also include the building commissioner as well, as a building commissioner.
On committees.
Answer to the select board.
It's two separate things.
Yes, it is.
Which is what it should be.
Yes, that's correct. But it's, but it's the nature of the working together, depending on what the circumstances is. And I like what Shelby's saying about adding, changing that wording down at the end there.
Just taking out.
Leaving the intent that the select board, the intent of this position is that the select board is involving it in conversations and planning about the buildings, so it not narrowing it down so specifically about the advisory committees.
Building-related commission committees, I think was good. I think taking out the advisory, just put building-related committees.
Yeah.
Or building-related.
Concerns?
And I don't know that I, I'm overly, I guess I don't really care overly, but.
So what if, what if we did this? And we'll, we'll eventually make this into a motion and, but if, but what if it said that the select board will involve the building commissioner in any discussions that are building-related where appropriate?
Yes.
Right, that's not what you.
Yeah, I think just make it, make it so if it's not specific.
You don't have to say this guy, that guy, that guy, you're something every time it's caught up.
Well, and then if it's not us in 20 years, it's not going to be one of those situations where the relationships may be not as good and somebody's, the planning commissioner or somebody does approach the board, but then they don't invite the building commissioner because, well, it doesn't say that we have, you know, just like, no, like the intent is for this to be a role that's involved in this, yeah.
So then Joseph, that if we make that change, does that?
I think that makes sense.
Does that clarify, is that clarified enough that you think it, that it makes more sense?
Yeah, I do think it makes more sense and it definitely, it broadens it out, like you were saying. But again, I still have, yeah, what's, for the purpose of this.
Yeah, right, yeah.
This, I think that that makes sense and it definitely makes a little more.
And I don't disagree. I have questions about how a lot of this actually works. But yeah, okay. Okay, then I would like to make a motion, actually, I'm going to make two motions, I guess. The first motion I'm going to make is, I'd like to make the motion that we create a building commissioner appointed position for the town of Brookline. Is there a second?
Well, seconded.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion about that? Okay, all those in favor of creating a building commissioner position?
Right, two of us.
I don't know if we covered what exactly we're going to do in the future if we don't have anyone to fill that position. Is that, is that just something that by default?
It's assumed. It just, it just falls back on us.
Like it falls back on us anyways.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I just wanted to cover.
Any appointed positions that are vacant are essentially whatever responsibilities we may have defined or things that then, they then fall back on the select board if we haven't, if we have no one appointed.
Yeah, I just wanted to cover that because in the future, maybe there won't be anyone that wants to.
Right. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so all those in favor of creating a building commissioner appointed position, Bruce, for the town of Brookline, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, now I'd like to make a motion that we approve this job description essentially for the town of Brookline building commissioner with the small edits that we've made. Is there a second to that?
I seconded.
Seconded by Gwen. Any discussion about that? Okay, all those in favor of approving the town of Brookline building commissioner job description with the minor edits, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? So I'll make that change and we have our.
Wait, what happened?
Yes, it's a appointed position.
Did I, Alex was so late, I missed them? Was that quick?
No.
So we tabled that, and those guys aren't here. Yeah, we've tabled it until March 4th.
We're tabling the road commission appointment till the organizational committee, organization entered the town meeting. Is, can I discuss that for a second? What are we doing with all this, so, I guess, right?
Oh, about building things or?
Well, no, about, about the road commissioner thing.
We've tabled it.
Okay.
I think it's not appropriate for us to discuss it because we've now.
I know what you're, I know what you're implying. Okay, we can talk about it.
So, so next up is our discussion about the marijuana legislation.
Oh, this is.
So. So we had a summary essentially that Daniel Dodson has done for the planning commission. The planning commission.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
The planning commission is going to be discussing this at their meeting at the beginning of February and just wanted us to have some of the same information and have whatever discussion meet we may or may not want to have at this point. And mostly, I think, just kind of use it as a summary to bring us up to speed on where things have been and where things are. We certainly have the ability to pass on to the planning commission our thoughts and concerns or lack of concerns as a board. I guess I'll just kind of open it up for discussion at the moment based on the summary that we were given. Anybody have any?
When was that summary printed?
January 6th.
Okay.
Because it's the day before the debate on legislation started, I believe.
I memorized it.
Zuckerberg is in favor of it. I just listened to it. Scott, I don't know where it comes.
I mean, obviously, as we see, whatever would move forward has timing that really isn't starting until about a year from now at the earliest. But I think the planning commission, you know, wants to start to, you know, because obviously there are things that we, as, that's called out here. I mean, there are things we could do as a, as a municipality to, even if everything passes and is approved as it was, we could restrict things differently ourselves as a community if we wanted to.
Like dispensaries.
Like foot lanes.
Like retailers, I mean, certainly. Yeah, I mean, you know, we have the ability to, we would have the ability to institute an optional local option tax if we wanted to. We would have the ability to prevent retail if we wanted to. Anybody have any particularly, whatever, strong feelings or things that you want to pass on to the planning commission at the moment? I would guess I would also say I would encourage any of us that can to attend the planning commission meeting perhaps, if possible. They're just beginning to discuss this as well. I think their next meeting is, I want to say the 6th? Possibly, but I'm.
Yes, the 6th.
I believe, yeah. I will say unfortunately, I have a different meeting that night, so I can't attend that. But.
But they're just beginning the discussion.
They're just beginning the discussion as well. And, you know, obviously, you know, any, they're just starting to get their minds around it and I think also just sort of, you know, relate how any of this may, how any of this may relate to our town plan that was just adopted or potentially if there are any things that might need to change about our town plan in the future, stuff like that.
I have one question that I don't think is really for any of us, but if any of our input gets back to legislators, I'm curious on, I need to mine if I borrow your copy real quick just so I can find the specific wording. Says on the third page, under S54, that, the very last sentence, that they would also change marijuana to cannabis throughout Vermont statutes. I'm curious as to why they would do so because unless I'm mistaken, that is simply broadening the term marijuana, although it's not necessarily a scientific terminology, it's specific to cannabis sativa. And cannabis would not, would hypothetically not only cover marijuana, but it would also cover everything else in the cannabis family.
Like hemp?
Like hemp and any of the hemp extracts that are potentially.
And I think that's the reason for it, is to include that.
Yeah.
To include the other things, not just marijuana, but things like hemp and there's probably who knows what's in the wind.
And that concerns me because I'm not 100% sure if, and then at that point, with the 16% state tax plus the 2% potential local option, would that apply? And how would that apply to all cannabis products? That could, again, that could be hemp for anything from textiles to CBD extract, which again, I think would have more of an impact on our community than, than like cannabis, than marijuana retailers, which I don't understand.
This summary is basically what's in front of the legislation now. And this is what they're going to be voting and also, or discussing before it goes to a vote. And, you know, I think it's premature at this point to really say anything because I don't think they have made their decisions yet.
It's not coming up in this session, is it?
It is in this session, but, and again, it is only because it was in last session. This is part of by annual, so it will come up and more than likely, it will see some light and in some shape or form. This is some of a generalization. It also has some of the concerns of other people. So it's good that the town has an idea of what they're thinking up there, that in the event there's something that really troubles the town, that they could vocally or, or speak to their legislators to see what they can do about it.
Yeah. No, I, I, that's the feeling that I got, especially with how, you know, chances are nothing's going to pass with the governor dragging his feet on the roadside test and all that such. But I was just curious, when they presented us with this, with their, did we have an official channel to submit feedback to the legislators? Or if we have a specific concern such as that, should we as a citizen contact the legislators?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think honestly, we don't really have any channel beyond what we have as citizens, as far as this is concerned, as far as legislative stuff is concerned in this respect.
Yeah, so this is passed solely for us to start turning the wheel of what we're going to do pending, you know, any.
How it'll affect us and how.
Yeah, and like I said, this is something that was put together, Daniel Dodson of the planning commission, put this together himself in order to just sort of be able to start the discussion and with some historical references for the planning commission as well as ourselves and the town.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't know if he had that connection to the legislators, aside from anything as a citizen.
Not as, no, not as far as I'm aware, anyway.
When is that meeting that you see?
I think we're thinking it's February 6th, but I don't actually have dates. I just know it's in February and I'm not actually sure what the date is. I thought that's been actually referenced in here, but it doesn't. Okay, any other thoughts on this at the moment? All righty, then we're flying right along to 6D, which is the Wyndham Regional Commission broadband project or Wyndham Region broadband project. So I went to a meeting at the fire station last week about this. And essentially, we've, we've seen some emails about it and maybe people remember. Essentially, the Wyndham Regional Commission in conjunction with a couple of private nonprofit companies have received a grant to do a few things. And the first part of that is related to broadband in this region, in the Wyndham region. And the first part of that is to determine the feasibility of. a broadband, a fiber optic broadband specific service to rural towns generally, or towns in general in this region, but more specifically probably rural towns. So the initial part of that, so it's entirely possible that they will go through this process and determine it's not feasible to do and that would be the end of it. If they go through it and determine it is feasible to do, then the, the further phases of it would be actually getting a provider and potentially launching, having a provider launch service in some portion of the region, which may or may not involve our town depending on lots of other factors. For the moment, really, the only thing that is being focused on is doing a survey of all of the member towns to help determine the feasibility of like, okay, do people, are people happy with what they have already? Would they want something that's faster or less expensive? And, and then determinations will be made down the road by, by the people who are working on the grant as to what that means. So I, I think we should, at the very least, we're not obligating ourselves to do anything with this beyond helping them try to get their survey out to as many people as possible in the town. They're trying to get the survey done basically in the next month. The first, the next meeting that is happening on this is February 6th. I've expressed, well, you guys are really not leaving yourselves a whole lot of time to figure this out, but it's, it's unfortunately they have a very compressed timeframe based on how long it took for them to partner up after the grant was awarded, but so it is what it is. So basically what they need from us, and this is a motion that I'm about to make, they basically want a motion, a, a a voted motion from us saying that we're going to participate and naming a point of contact for that. I would like to be the point of contact for that because I've already started down the road with that. Anyway, and I'm already planning on going to the next meeting. So I'm going to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to express the town of Brookline's intent to participate in the Wyndham Region Broadband Project and to appoint the official town point of contact as David Jones. Do I add a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, by the way. Now let's discuss that motion. Anybody have any concerns about that? Like I say, at this point, we're, we're not committing ourselves, nor any of the towns committing themselves to actually want to have any of this broadband service brought. It's really just at this point about trying to get the survey out to people and so that they can determine the feasibility of this whole thing, if there is feasibility to it. I do not, there's beyond, I expect that there will be some effort necessary on our part and I'm willing to be the one who puts forth that effort as far as getting copies of the physical survey to people or getting guy to put links to it on the webpage and I will send out links to it through the list sort of stuff like that. I do not anticipate, nor do I want there to be any monetary cost to our town to do this. So we'll, you know, I will help them with as much effort as I need to help them up until the point it would be something that they would want to suspend. I don't think they intend that. They're trying to keep this as inexpensive as possible. So like I say, I don't, I don't expect this to involve any cost at this point. Okay, any other questions about it or? Okay, so all those in favor of expressing the town of Brookline's intent to participate in the Wyndham Region Broadband Project and to appoint David Jones as the official point of contact, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Right, so I'll let them know. We've passed that.
This is, you say participate in the WRC broadband project, non broadband project survey?
Uh, no, it's the project, but the first part of the project is basically the survey.
Inocasta Town, I do render assistance.
Yep. Okay. Then moving down to old business and first up is a Suze's Little Peanuts building update.
Mr. Mellow with a W. Cut it out. Anyway, after our meeting last week, I called the two painters. I called Norm Holden twice on Thursday and Monday and haven't heard back from him. And hopefully he's smart enough and looking forward to it. But I haven't heard from him yet, the winner of the bid. I talked to Mo Mommy at great length and he was, thank, thank you for calling back. We discussed some of the details of what was going to be done with the building. He wanted to know, he wanted to know who got the bid, I told him, and he said, well, he does really good work. And it was all, it all went really well. And I also told him we would consider if we ever do the steeple or any other painting, that's going to go out the bit that he, I called him to notify him. Okay, that's that. Oh, and I also talked to Olivia and she, I left her an email about the daycare thing and she never called me back, but I went over there to talk to her about some other things and she said that they can't do it just from a legal standpoint. They call it five thirty, Philly can't be used for anything after five thirty, so using it for daycare for the town, they, they can't do it. Then last night I had my buddy Dave Zalesko called on to chat with me about a few things and it was in my back of my mind what Chris Fogerty had to say about the old windows being in, and I quote, disrepair. And I said, the only objection I have with those old windows is the way they open it because some of the weights have fallen off the ropes over the years. So I asked him that, he knows how to rebuild those things, so for a couple 300 bucks, we can go through the whole, the old windows, make sure they work fine, fine. And the only other thing that's in disrepair that I know about is one pane of glass that's cracked that will be replaced from the painting side. So he had a very nice, nice conversation. I told him he didn't want to work now. He also waited, he also let off. Well, that's a part of retiring, you guys look at that. But he's, he's open to doing it in the spring and if you have any little work that needs to be done, not necessarily, I'm making a pitch for him, not necessarily town work, but he's really good. I mean, I can't over emphasize, he, he did every little stupid little thing I want him to do right now. Folding everything. Question?
Yeah, so the bid that we approved last time was not to fix the windows in their entirety?
It was not to fix the ropes, no, it's to paint and fix any, any glass.
So. So it will at least fix the glass.
Oh, yes.
But then we'll have to pay extra to fix the opening system?
I just remember, it's only one or two, I believe, that the ropes have broken off the weights. We're talking nominal money here, Johnson. We're not talking about 50,000, 1500 dollars. It's just a matter of taking this, and he explained to me, take the sash off, put the weight, weight on, and you're back in business.
Okay.
In fact, Tina's husband, Randy did it on their own. But it's just a matter of because they're old, it's like your battery going on your car. Wear cycle lens doesn't mean the car's no good, but you gotta replace the battery now. It's the same thing.
Did you name this gentleman?
Dave.
Dave Zalesko.
Zalesko.
Oh, right.
Z E L A S K O.
Zalesko.
Zalesko. Okay. That's it? Cool, alright. Oh, one more thing. I think everybody should have free form as to get in there for town meeting beforehand. Dave and I talked about it, it's like four o'clock was good, you think, we might even be able to get in there earlier, so if there's any concerns, I can straighten that out Olivia.
Has anybody, has anybody volunteered to find out who's going to do the?
Well, this would segue nicely into 7B, which is town meeting.
You're right, it does.
And I got a who read it at the Democratic meeting the other day when, when I told them that, don't forget now, we're going to have our meeting at six o'clock and then yes, oh, great. It was my wife who was there, she answered.
So town meeting. So yes, that's a, that's a good question. The last couple of years, Sarah Webb has coordinated the food. Does someone want to volunteer to reach out to her to ask whether she's willing to do that again or is there someone?
Well, I've been conversing with Chris online on politics, I think.
Yeah, you don't, yeah.
Do you want to, yeah, do you want to ask her?
Yeah, I actually made a Saturday, so she's interested.
You can yell down to their house.
I can do it. Yeah, I, I could.
Are we going to be doing a lot more with the food this time? Because I mean, in the past, it's kind of like coffee, whatever, everyone brings a few things. Are we gonna, are we looking to do more so people come and hang out and?
Well, usually, usually, I think last year, they, they, last year, they didn't have a lot of participation, but usually they had some finger sandwiches and somebody brought some salad. There's always desserts, apple pie, cookies, this type thing.
I think donuts.
Maybe with this being a different time of day and a different day of the week, I'll even volunteer to do it. Maybe we keep the planning for this kind of on the sled board to set up, not that she doesn't do it, but just because it is kind of a brand new time, we're going to be trying to figure out how to even get people there, get people involved. So if you can give me Sarah's contact information, I can reach out to her and like, but maybe I can be like the point person on the sled board. So if you have any ideas about trying to expand it or trying to have a different strategy to make it that super clean.
Last year, they just didn't have enough notice to say, please, we need some help.
Which we're already not getting.
Right.
It's getting close, yes.
And this isn't like a breakfast in the morning where you have coffee and donuts and.
Yeah, this is going to be.
Well, this could be a dessert kind of thing, you know, coffee and pastries and stuff.
Well, I, but I think what they're saying is it's more going to be like a dinner thing because people used to eat in at 5:30, 6. We're going to be there at 6. So they did have beans and.
So I guess.
Because remember, I remember the very first one I ever went to, I went, man, pick up food.
So I guess one thing to start with.
That's what I said, you.
On the church.
So one thing to consider is that unlike, you know, I mean, normally in the past, when we've had a non-town meeting day, our town meeting is gone for two, three hours and then people have eaten lunch at that point and left. Obviously, this is a different situation now. If we're starting the town meeting at 6, then do we want people to be getting there at 5 and eating prior to it? I, I don't know.
But look at this.
Yeah, and then I think the wild animals, I want to show them at 6:15 late and grab a plate and sit and participate.
Exactly, sit and eat and participate.
That's okay, but this is different because.
And we'll catch them if they eat and leave.
Yeah.
But it's not a break this time. Half the time they're spending, you know, you have to throw them the other half of the plate.
Right.
But by the same token, the moderator can say, let's take a 15-minute pause and for people to go to the restroom and also have some coffee or whatever it is. Well, that's probably not a bad idea in as much as that we're not going to have a school meeting this year. We don't know how, what the legislators are going to do. I assume they're going to show up. We haven't told yet that we're having the meeting on Monday. I don't know.
So that's a good point. So who wants to reach out to the legislators to let them know about this and see if they can.
I think I still have Jim Trubler's email. I have their phone numbers and emails.
Well, or do, Gwen, do you want to make a note for between you?
You have the numbers?
I have all their contact information. Alright, so at what time would you like them to be there?
I mean, I think we would probably want them to be there right at the beginning or else I don't really know when. I mean, we don't really know how long this is going to take. We haven't done it before.
What if we just invited?
The safest thing is probably for them to be at the beginning.
Yeah.
Do they need to be on the minutes? What if we just invited them to join us for our hotluck and mingle with townspeople?
Well, they, they have, they have, they have actual presentations that they need to, well, whether they need to, but
And also.
Well, the reality is that if we, you know, they may not be able to make it in which case, so it's obviously not likely.
Well, I'm just curious if it could be more of like an informal participation prior to, so it doesn't like add to the length of meeting.
Yeah, I think, what I fear is that we'll get both if we do it that way because I think the reality is there will only be so many people there at that point.
No, that's okay, yeah, okay.
And they're probably, if they're coming to do it, they're probably are going to want to speak when the actual meeting is happening, is my guess.
No, Lisa, just a thought.
Yeah, no, I don't, and I think it's.
Don't they usually talk after we do the first seven articles?
Well, first we have to elect a moderator, that's the most important thing. Right.
Yeah, and then we suspend, yeah, I mean, they, historically, they've, they've talked when they showed up. When, when, at the time that they're able to make it and they're, and, and I mean, I'm not being, I'm not trying to be unkind to them, but they're trying to make it to numerous other town meetings, whereas now, in theory, that night, this would be the only thing that they're doing.
And also if I was to notify Scott Sebastian too from Blue Book, because he comes every time. We don't have, we have a school board meeting, but maybe he wants to come talk to us and I could.
Yeah, right, I mean, that's not really ever something other than when we had school meetings that was necessarily on the agenda.
But I can come, all I have is email, just, but no, really, well, I'll let him know that we're okay to join the meeting.
Uh, I kind of agree with Shelby that maybe invite the, all the lawmakers to come earlier so they can mingle with people because although I know some people are really stoked to use the town meeting time to hear from the lawmakers who do have a predetermined agenda. We, it is our town meeting and I have spoken to quite a few townspeople that attend town meeting that feel as though the lawmakers sometimes are using our time to push their agenda when, you know, it is our town meeting. So if they were given the opportunity to, you know, come and mingle and speak with the people and then they could maybe, you know, keep it relatively brief during the town meeting. I don't know exactly what happens every year.
Well, there's. Yeah, no, no, I mean, I'll say that every year I've been at one, there are quite a few people who have questions for them.
Yeah.
And so I guess what I would, I would, you know, if they're just there mingling with people, I don't really know how they handle that scenario.
Well, you can, you can invite them to buy a box for the food.
That's, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
We can invite them, yeah.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, and I'm not saying we should, we, we should tell them they like get out when the meetings are. I'm just saying that if, if they were to come at 5, the people who really have questions, that's, you know, more time that they could spend with the, directly with the lawmakers.
Assuming people are able to, I mean, we're still talking about the time that people may not be able to get there at that point.
I just figured it would make sense to provide that there.
You don't even suggest they come at 5:30 and they'll be able to do their little spilling at 6.
No, 6:30, oh, okay, yeah.
You know, 5:30 for them to mingle a little bit, they could talk a little bit after 6. Because we don't have to be back.
Alright, I'll see what their schedule is and I'm going to have them on the agenda, not a agenda, but I'm going to say, we will give you the floor by 6:15.
That's, that's our hope.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's, it is up to the people. If, if people hypothetically, people could refuse to do it, I mean, nobody does, but.
But in one year, they talk and eat, I think that's good too.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
And if they have time, that's awesome, yeah.
There's another good reason for having any, any early meeting, because you want to. Well, it's going to be kind of new and it's going to be exciting and hopefully that we get the response that we're hoping for, you know.
So another thing that I think people wanted to talk about in general around this is, okay, how do we get the word out to people and make sure, you know.
Well, we have the front porch form. Dave, just want to make one point. I read the book All Was a Favor that Deb Luskin was talking about. Dave, just wanna make one point, I read the book All Was a Favor, that Deb Luskin was talking about.
Yeah.
And it was like a seventy or eighty page book, I read the whole thing, a bunch of it didn't pertain to us. But the one point that I got from it and I seemed to drill it right home, actually, it was two faces of what went. That usually, if you get twenty percent of your electorate at the meeting, you're about where you should be. In our case, it was, what would we do, it was eighty-three?
No, we had sixty-seven, seventy, oh, sorry.
No, 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 when I asked you the amount of people who were in town and I multiplied it by twenty percent, it was eighty-three.
Oh, yeah.
But the second point is, what brings the people out, maybe this is obvious, and this is the point that I was making in the book, of the new authors. Something for them to come for, some kind of issue or something that's a matter of import, a matter of import. If there's nothing that really is just electing officers and doing this.
Well, we can't make it up.
Right, who said it's?
But I think it's.
So I'm just cleaning up points so you don't understand what I'm, just exchanging with you what I, what I learned from this book. And with the attempt, again, of pushing the intention of trying to see what we can, who, it kind of dovetails with what you were talking about, Dave, and doing what we can to get people out. But it, and I see you even said this to Stan Milken yesterday, and he agreed, it's usually, if there's an issue, whether it's rebuilding a bridge or something on the schools and buildings, that brings them out. So I don't know how we can.
Well, I.
Point towards anything that would.
You can use the reformer without being, without it costing any money by sending out a news release. And that's not, you know, it's kind of circumventing how to get away from newspaper ads. So if you come in and say, you know, to whoever it is at the reformer saying, the town in Brookline is, has a news, you know, a news blog saying that we're gonna meet on Monday for the first time in a long time, give a little story, let them put it in the reformer, and it's free, because it's news.
Okay, we love not paying. Okay, but that still doesn't necessarily.
No, well, you have the front porch forum, you have Julie Lovornia, we have the website, I mean, that's.
Yeah. But we still, it'd be nice, before we made up the articles, how are we dating this, you're a fit employee at this point, can we, can we lie and invent something?
No, I think the, the, the hook this year is that we're doing it, it's, it's a new time, it's a new day.
Yeah, that'll do it.
I mean, let's, maybe next year, we'll, we'll hope for something exciting to register or manage.
Yeah.
And there's a surplus that they can vote on, that's a big thing.
That's true, that's true, but if you remember at the last town meeting, they were like into it for the money.
Let's just, let's just make sure that we don't say anything about needing health officers.
We're not asking for help, we don't need anyone, we're all good, get from there.
Before they got one.
I think, so ju- just to put everything straight in my head, and I'd certainly like to speak with you more, Shelby, about, you know, getting food together and all that. We, when we speak to people, we're going to distinctly say, five o'clock, show up at five o'clock, there's gonna be food.
Potluck at five o'clock.
Food at five.
Yeah, it starts at six.
The meeting starts at six, and then that way, we're all saying the same exact thing to people.
Yep, very good.
When people got that hour, they wanna show up at twenty after or five thirty.
Can we incorporate the word cocktails?
Mop.
B O I O B.
Cake, of course.
Um.
Oh, that would bring a lot of fun.
I just wanted to get that, you know, and then we'll.
I would bring about.
Yeah.
And then we just have to make sure we have enough help for setting it up, extension cords and pot pots and all that.
Yeah, we always get through that.
Yeah. Minty popcorn, maybe.
Popcorn.
Good job.
Yes, good, it's fantastic.
But we'll, we'll talk, um, kinda off the top of the head on this, and that way, we'll know what we can, you know, tell people that there's gonna be food.
Yeah, rent a popcorn machine. Yeah, like the old school.
Right.
So people don't expect like they have to bring something, or like, do I have to eat before I come to that?
Right, right, right. Right.
We'll just figure out how much food is gonna be there, and, and that way, we can say, hey, look, there's gonna be a bunch of food.
Right. Well, the attention has to be here, beautiful.
No, I think like just fingers.
Can I, can I make this suggestion, since it seems to be gravitating this way, and are you two?
Spearheading.
Spearheading the organization and communication outreach for town meeting.
Concession.
Yeah, it sounds like.
I'd, I'd be happy to.
I think you are.
And I'm gonna, okay, thank you, it's a rhetorical question, but I definitely am still gonna reach out to Sarah most of the time, like, show her contacts.
Yeah.
Right, because I think. I think.
I just don't know as many people in town, I'd love to know who she's on the top.
I think she did, I think she did, the donations, I think, went to her school, some school project, I think it was, because they give donations.
Exactly. Right, so that's another thing, right.
So we need to know where, you know, if Sarah's still willing to do it, it could still go.
Yeah, if you could mention a charity, yeah, or the organization.
For her.
I think donations would go toward, uh, toward better food for next year's town meeting.
I think the donations went to.
You ought to consider Barbara Born.
I don't think we can do that.
You ought to consider Barbara Born too, because she has.
Um, it is something that, it is something to, to be sure to figure out, because usually, there is a donation jar.
Yeah, it's.
Because when Kenny used to do it, it went for.
To make sure that we're clear on where that donation, where those donations are going.
Because they do leave, what is it?
The way it's worked in the past usually is whoever has organized it decided where the donations were going.
Gets the donation.
Or, or, or not decided exactly, but, you know, whatever, sometimes the, you know, whatever, the ladies benevolence society used to do it.
They have things to do.
School painting fund.
So, yeah, so are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
I don't mean to like put you on the spot, but it seems like it's kind of naturally happening already, that you two will.
And Barbara Born.
She makes great eggs.
Obviously, I'm gonna make. Well, you know, it'll, it'll be in the town report as far as the warning being in the town report. I'll also sort of flag it in the select board report, but, you know, but other than that, it's, it could still be, and it's not gonna get to people for a while, so.
I'm gonna speak to Bob Ardet at the reformer and see what, what he suggests, how we can get a, a blob in there, you know, and, and without it costing us any money and so forth. And I know it can be done, and, you know, I'll let him steer me in the right direction.
That's great.
And I think even though we don't have social media, the, um, the church does, right?
They have Facebook.
They have a Facebook page, so if there's, if anyone's not to the.
Yeah, because the donation collection go to the, to the.
It could, that's, that's what I was thinking too, because it's actually a town thing, but.
I think that's a good, good idea.
But then they could also share on their social media, even though we don't have social media, I'm sure of the interested parties in town or vaguely interested parties, a good handful of them are.
You know, or even if Sarah has her, because she was so good to, to kind of jump in there when we needed her, even if we split it with her donations for her charity and then half of it going to our, our blank meeting house, um.
Yeah, that's, Lily, that's.
That can be discussed.
Yeah.
I think another kind of obvious point, but especially to anyone watching or anyone that reads the minutes and to all of us as well. If we just talk about it now, I'm sure that all of us do speak about it with, with the people that we talk with regularly.
Right. Yeah, right.
But, you know, we all know a lot of people, so if we just say, hey, you know, town meeting, five, food at six, and ask, and ask others to tell a few people, you know, there's only a couple, you know, there's only, best case scenario, we're gonna get, you know, not to, you know, a hundred people would be awesome, a hundred people would be awesome, so that's really only a, a couple people telling a couple other people and.
That would, that would.
I think a couple of, uh, well-placed signs on the highway would also be a, a way to, you know, a couple of days before the meeting,
Yeah.
stick them in the snow if it is, whatever it is, you know, just like the, for voting and so forth.
Or in front of the, in front of the church, yes, because everybody sees that.
Yeah. Yeah, just a couple, you know, without getting over crazy, but just to let people know.
Why don't you use your sandwich board or whatever, put it on there.
Well, the sandwich board is tough because it's, the snow is so piled usually, but whatever, we'll figure a way. But that's an idea that we can use to get the word out, because people go every single morning, go back and forth to work.
I like your idea about the reformer, we probably shouldn't put an ad in the comments too.
Yes, the comment, I, I think, um.
To be on the counter if you get sprayed here, it's power, you're pretty sure.
Um, so one other thing, uh, which we don't have to nail down right now, but just to have in the back door, is we still obviously do need to set up the room that day in advance of five.
You gotta be there by probably four o'clock, it takes about an hour to set it up.
Did she have any problem with us getting in there at four o'clock?
No.
Because they're open till about five?
No, she's planning on.
She's planning on taking the day off.
What time can people actually start arriving at it, because we're gonna use the front door.
Yeah, that's fine.
What time?
Well, you can, she knows that, she knows that starting at, we're gonna start the potluck at five.
Okay.
So you're gonna have, you're gonna have some people probably leaving big close to five thirty, you're gonna be crisscrossing, but you know, it's not a big deal.
No, it's, sometimes it was with them because they had certain criteria to have to meet, to let people in and so forth. It's, it's all about federal regulations, I, you know.
Right, there is no issue, not, not with this.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, Suzie knows about it, Olivia knows about it, they asked me even before I went over to talk to them about it, I was kind of hugging down for the big character, but that didn't work. And if there's any other small issues, I'm sure we can argue about it.
To your point though, David, I think that, I know myself, and I don't wanna speak for anyone else, but I would assume most of us plan on showing up at four o'clock anyways, so.
I probably won't be able to, just because I.
We could probably nail people like staying over if he's not working.
But yeah, as long as people are, as long as, and it really doesn't take more than a couple people in, whatever, the chairs and a couple tables, it's fast.
I know I'll be there at four.
I could do it.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll figure it out.
Um, anything else for the moment on town meeting? We'll keep putting it on the agenda so we can kind of keep talking about it, but.
Yeah.
Sign of some sort at the recycle bin.
Ah, good spot.
Like, do you like your recycling? Come to town meeting day, tell us how much.
Yeah, good one.
Your, your recycling just went up four grand, come to town meeting.
There's a controversy.
There is. Hang your. Hang your.
Yeah, well, just if it's faded, or, yeah, no, I have, I have a couple more, I need to go down and replace it, and I just keep.
No rush, you've got enough.
Um, okay, anything else on town meeting?
It's winter.
All right, moving on to seven C town report, um, still haven't started it, kind of thought I would by now, this weekend.
We promise.
Sure. Uh, like I say, I still haven't gotten any word from the auditors, so I don't exactly know what the state of the financial reports are. Hopefully, I'll hear something soon.
So we don't, we don't know if the surplus is at that point.
I don't really know anything, I mean, I haven't, I haven't heard anything from anyone saying that anything needs to be changed, but I also haven't heard that it doesn't need to be changed, so I don't know at the moment. Um, it sounds from what Guy pieced together that they're, they're hopefully finishing up.
Yes, this Thursday.
I told them that I absolutely positively had to have everything done by Monday, this coming Monday, so hopefully, a worst-case scenario, this weekend, I'll hear about some stuff. Something else related to town report, which I have not yet done, is I have not yet started to write the select board report. I will be doing that this weekend, and so probably the first time you'll see it is when I send you all links to the first draft of the town report on hopefully Monday. So, you know, I, I guess my envision is mostly thanking people and telling people about the census and telling people about this broadband survey and emphasizing the time of town meeting and the potluck and encouraging people to come to meetings and participate, et cetera, et cetera, I don't know, something. But otherwise, Guy, thank you for all the reports that you and Gwen have done, that stuff is all good. So it's really just the stuff I have to create and the auditors that's still outstanding. And that's it for that, so moving on to the, what we added, which was a seven D about road equipment. And Bruce, you have some information that you've come across.
Yeah, she first wanted to say, appreciate with, look at you, Joseph, and with the vote, uh, the, the work that you guys did on the committee. Must have been much fun. Uh, what I did was I decided to call just to confirm, not to check what you did, but to confirm that, that the unit had been gone. I had to reply, and to confirm what you were saying. And the second breath of my mouth, I asked, please keep us in mind if you have anything that's similar to where I look at. And he said, well, it just so happens I have something. And I'll go into it in a second, but then I went into, then he is, then he, his name's JD. And then I, then he told me about his website and the stuff that they had on sale and the appointment he had to get into the excavators and, and I'll come and get that, but. There are three units that I saw that were, that were available, two Tyrex and one Volvo. And the two Tyrex were sixty-eight five and ninety-six six, and I didn't write all the specifics down as to what, what they were, Stan, but what they were in terms of, of equipment or anything, because it's in the website, but the other, I have more information, do you have a question, Joseph?
No, I know, I know pretty much exactly what you're looking at, I assume the ninety-six, six one is the machine from last year, they probably haven't removed it from the, um, website yet. The sixty-eight, eight, or six, whatever, the sixty-one is like, uh, we looked at that, that was that super old one.
It's part Tyrex and part something.
Yeah, that, that one we, we are aware of, it's old and it's not a good fit for the town.
Okay. I love that.
The Volvo, do you have information on that? Which one is that one called?
Sixty-two.
I apologize because I actually copied, made like five copies of pictures of it and everything, and.
Anyway, it was sixty-two.
Pardon?
It was sixty-two thousand.
No.
The one in Volvo?
It was fifty-two thousand, it was fifty-two thousand, fifty-two thousand, fifty-two thousand.
I thought you said it was ten grand for the, uh, over the rail.
Yeah, let me finish. Those over fifty-two was for the, for the equipment. He sent me a quote write-off and gave it to us for forty-eight nine six eight with the addition of the over rail mower, which I, I then called him that again today to ask some additional questions, but one of that was about the over rail mower. And there's something about the way it hooks up to the, the unit, they have to have a different brace or something, but you're looking anywhere from four to ten thousand dollars additional for the over the rail mower. So, not sixty grand, not quite sixty grand, even if you go that far on this particular guy. My only problem with it, but it was, it's really mimicking what the stuff that you found, other than what we had already known about, which is the one that Mark, uh, used.
Is that Zemex on it?
Yes, I think it has X on it, not much, it's not gonna help you much, sorry, but I can. Is that Mark hasn't driven the one I'm looking at.
Right.
And that's my, that's my only big issue, I mean, is, this, the price of this is forty thousand dollars less, it's got fifty-seven hundred dollars on it, it's a hundred and thirty, what is it, pound, I believe, and that's all I'd recollect at this point, but it's in the website, it's easy to pull up. And again, I apologize for not bringing the pictures, you know, and that, all the information, but.
Go ahead, Joseph. I will double-check this, but I believe that this, for one, uh, this is a two thousand six, that's a fourteen-year-old machine.
That's correct.
I would, it, it doesn't say what the hours of it are.
They have, so. Fifty-seven hundred.
Fifty-seven hundred, so that's pretty high.
Yes. Well, it's up there.
That's pretty high, um, I also.
I, you know, I asked him if he, they, they bring it to the shop before we, before we get it, but my biggest concern is not, everything that you're saying is that that man has not driven it. And it was so high on that unit that we looked at, that we originally had, and, you know, how, any machine, if we hadn't bought that one, he hasn't driven it, I, I have an issue with that.
Can I, what's the model number of Volvo?
It's.
It's a one sixty, so I think it's a lot, and again, this is what I wanna double-check, but I think that's pretty big.
It's an EW one sixty.
I think that's, we looked at those and they're more.
It's a good size.
Yeah, we can catch you.
It's an EW one sixty B, like I said, you can pull it up very easily, Abletr, abeltractor dot com, you go into equipment, you go into excavators, there's a hundred and thirty-eight.
Good at being six.
There's a hundred and thirty-eight, um, excavators, there's about a dozen in the last page and a half, five and six, that are wheeled excavators.
Yeah.
And they also have cats, you're getting more pricing.
Well, so, so I just wanna tell you, my, my immediate concern with this is, and again, I'll have to double-check, I believe that this is a big machine.
It's good size.
And we've, and we've discussed at length, um, yeah, we've discussed at length, um, the size of machine that would be appropriate for this town.
It's bigger than. It's bigger than this.
And, um, I think that we all were in agreement that a, a large machine is not necessarily what we want.
Too much.
All the cats, like you say, you see all the cats there and everything, they're all quite large machines, and I believe this one sixty is also a very large machine, so.
Well, maybe it's not a fifter.
I, I looked at that, it didn't, it didn't appear to be that large, it didn't look any bigger than.
I apologize, I'm gonna bring that damn picture.
But at any rate.
Well, here's what I, here's what I'd like to suggest, because a couple of things, one, this, this wasn't something that we had on the agenda, so we really shouldn't get too carried away with the discussion, but more importantly, we have an advisory committee. So I guess what I'd like to suggest is the details of this get passed to the advisory committee and the advisory committee looks into it in more detail and, you know, maybe there are other things that Abel has as well, whatever that may be. And they form a view on it and circle back to us with what their view is, I mean, that's.
Those ones.
You know, I, I don't want us to circumvent, and I'm not saying.
Yeah, I know that, I know.
You know what I mean, I, I want, you know, and granted, half of the advisory committee is here right now, but half of it isn't, and I don't want to, you know, eliminate their input into a discussion of this at the appropriate time, which isn't really now. It's good information and you've passed the information on. And, you know, it's not to say that the, that committee can't meet and have more discussion about it and we can't attend the meeting when they have that discussion. But it's a little beyond just bringing to people's attention, I don't think it's appropriate for us to go much further than that.
Well, Agent Duale, I can sort of, so we wait a month to have a meeting and then we start thinking about, then that one's gone. I would, my only suggestion is, I, I appreciate all the concerns and the ones that I brought up too, especially the one about you. That we be expeditious, that we don't wait a month, six weeks to have a meeting. And I'm not saying you would, so I'd like to see something happen quickly. I, I promised JD a response back, so I can respond back and tell him that we're, we're considering it and get back to him, or you can contact him. Joseph, it's entirely up to you, since you're, you're handling it.
Yeah, I mean, this, this certainly could be a new machine that fits our, our bill of what we initially put out for the bid quite a while ago. I don't think it does, but if it does, that kind of brings up the, the question that we had, which is machines are gonna spring up every now and again, and so.
That's why I did what I did.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, and I guess that, uh, that warrants the discussion from the select board, what we want to do.
This is why we shouldn't be discussing this. This isn't on the agenda, we didn't warn this as part of our meeting.
Again, far.
We can, we can put on the me, the agenda for the next meeting, if you want, a discussion of our road purchase approach, road equipment purchase.
Grouch.
This is, we shouldn't be discussing this, this much.
In the meantime, maybe we can have another meeting on the equipment and decide where, where we think it's going in one bound morning.
Yeah, we should follow along.
Mike.
Sorry Gwen, wait, you had a question?
My question is, is I don't see anything on here about the equipment, is that gonna be brought up under, um, to transact in the other business?
If someone wants to bring it up, yes.
Are you talking about the?
Maybe it is.
I wasn't even, even bending towards that, you're not gonna like that, I say. But I'm gonna say.
Here's what I'm gonna say. Discussing, discussing the town meeting warning is not on our agenda. So we're literally not gonna have any more discussion about this.
That's right, that's right, we can do it next time or whatever, or put it on the agenda for next time, any way you wanna word it.
Right, to discuss the approach, but I mean, I will say that, I mean, unless, unless someone wants to suggest that we warn a special select board meeting to talk about altering this warning, which we've already approved.
Oh, no, we don't do that.
We're not changing that.
I don't think we need to, and I'll explain why at the, at the appropriate time and stuff.
Because the other thing I'll say is, and just as a last little reminder, is that, you know, the machine that you found, that's great, but we didn't get a bid for that when we put this out for bid.
Well, your, your, your talk, and you asked me not to.
No, no, I'm saying by December fif, we put out, we put out a bid, and by December fifteen, we got three bids.
I was gonna react to that. It's, I was gonna react to that, but you, you said, don't talk anymore about it.
Well, I get to do it a little bit because I'm the chair.
Look.
I was just tying it all.
What I'm gonna say is that particular unit wasn't a part of that bid, that, that article that was rejected last, last March. At all, and I'm not being disingenuous here. But that, I read that article over that was rejected at town meeting, that's our.
There is nothing to do.
That has nothing to do with what we've done now.
No, no, I'm saying, that's nothing to do with my approach, it's a different unit entirely.
Right. We'll put on the agenda for the February fifth meeting for us to discuss our approach to road equipment purchase.
Yes, sounds good.
I would strongly encourage, if possible, for the road equipment advisory committee to meet and just have a little bit of a conversation prior to that, if possible.
Yes, that'd be wonderful.
Sorry Joseph, what's your last thoughts?
Uh, yeah, just wanna kind of clarify, um, we have, we do need to meet and kind of, um, wrap things up, think what we have moving forward. I am not a hundred percent sure if I'm going to be able to make the next select board meeting. So I, I might not be here for that. But, uh, from the select board's point of view, and I don't want to, like you said, get into this too deep, but, um, do we want the road purchase advisory committee, road equipment, whatever, to continue to actively look for pieces of equipment to buy within the next, despite what the committee, uh, advises, does the select board want the committee to continue searching for pieces of equipment to buy within the next?
That's something we can discuss on the fifth.
Hey, because.
That's something we can discuss on the fifth. The reason I'll say that I think it would behoove the committee to meet is merely that unless I'm mistaken, there has not been an actual warned meeting of that committee to finalize and clarify the bids that were actually received.
Yeah, you're, you're correct.
Two of the members didn't show up to the meeting that was intended to do that. I think that is the one thing that I would appreciate the committee closing the circle on. Where things go from here on road purchase and or the committee's involvement, I think is something we discuss at the next meeting.
Because I did ask the question to everybody, are we gonna, which is the answer to your question Joseph, is, are we gonna continue to, is the, is the select board interested in getting a piece of equipment or not? Are we gonna continue to pursue it, which is kind of what Joseph was just saying.
Yeah, we're.
I think that's what we discussed.
That's what we'll discuss on, we'll, we'll discuss to some extent at, at the very fifth, I mean. Okay. All right, moving on to Mr. Tanza, your town clerk update, what's going on?
I would just like to clarify that, while we were taking this, that the absentee early ballot request, we are required to ask the people who are requesting these, what party affiliation ballot they want. That's the law, it's in the statute, in Title seventeen, it's a law that the state is, uh, is involved in, so when people ask us, you know, how come you need to know that? We didn't make that law, it's the store, it's a law by the state. So they have to request a ballot. In the general election in November, we will give the people three ballots. They can only mark one and return the other two. But in the presidential primary, the Vermont presidential primary, there are two ballots, a Democrat and a Republican. You have to request that when you call up or when you come in the office or when you vote, which one you want, and that's the one we'll give you. And we seal it up and so forth, just to let you know. Dog licenses have been selling and, um, we've been relatively busy in the office inspired weather and cold weather. So, um, everything's good, Gwen continues to do her thing with the, the titles and the vault and we'll move you along. Thank you.
Thanks guys. Uh, Mark, what's going on with you?
I believe since the last time we had a meeting, we had some unseasonably warm weather and it caused the, two of the side roads to soften up, almost to the point of impassable with a, a car. So, uh, we took action with some truckloads of three quarter inch stone and applied that over the top of the areas. Basically, they were the areas that the sun shown in and exposed and softened, took frost out of the road is what it did. So we applied the stone and as it, we did this three or four days. Continued, uh, four different roads were in need. And, um, so we applied a dozen or more, um, large truckloads of three quarter inch stone to, uh, firm the roads back up. And I also brought, uh, some more stone to the townyard to replenish our stockpile so that in the future deeds, if we have some more issues, I can have some on hand. Normally this time of year, the gravel pits are closed and froze up for winter months, but this year they stayed open till January tenth. And the, the local pit in Jamaica, Sersasimos, we were able to get two loads before they closed and the weather continued, didn't have enough supply, so we brought more from Sersasimos, uh, pit out of Vernon, um, to accommodate the issue. And, you know, normally this time of year, this is a rare thing that we've had to do in a dozen years, uh, this time of year to work down the roads. Normally it's just plowing sand. And if I go out at all, it's usually to push snowbanks back with the wing plow on the breeder. And so this is the first time, like I say, in a dozen years, we've had to do extra work on the roads itself. So I could say that was approximately a week's worth of, uh, I was going out watching the forecast, trying to, uh, smooth the surface so that it would freeze smoothly. And we got most of it smooth and, uh, there was a few ruts which I scraped off afterwards and some of it is just covered in snow. The other thing I was working on was, uh, I talked about it at the last meeting, I had an appointment with Green Mountain Power's representative. I told him that they were installing three new poles on Putney Mountain and that's a continuation of the end of the line. And I approved those which you talked about. But at the same time, we met, we toured the entire Brookline roadways and, um, the representative told me that they're in the process statewide of, uh, moving the power lines that are not easily accessed over the roads, they like to keep their power lines now right beside the road for ease of maintenance with the bucket trucks, so they can go up and reconnect wires or go over there. So, um, there's a couple of places around town that they're moving the power lines out of the woods and bringing it, uh, over the, over our town highways. So I was showing those areas. I also showed, uh, at least six poles in our town. The, uh, the poles are extremely close to the travel lane, to the point where they've been hit over the years by plow trucks and heavy equipment and they're just a, a road hazard, you know, so, I showed the representative the ones to my concern, not knowing if there was any definite, uh, motive to, uh, get these further away from the road and, um, he's very accommodating and agreed up with me that it would be nice if they were set back, so he came back, um, another day and restated he's gonna move some poles. Some of them as much as twenty feet away, uh, to better the roads for us with the poles. Some of them were just old and, uh, been hit by, like I say, trucks or cars and were big splinters taking half the wood away. And so, uh, we, we spent like a half a day, uh, going line for line, pole to pole. I think we made a lot of progress there, there's one pole I'm still working on, uh, Green Mountain Power has already put in new poles, ran their power lines, but there's a, a telephone line, um, I think it's Comcast Communications on it. It's a very old pole and it's, it's like a foot off the pavement on Hill Road. And so, uh, Green Mountain Power was kind enough to forward me a phone number of a representative from Consolidated Telephone Company and I've made a call to them and they needed the nine one one address to, for location. And the representative's gonna come out and look, if it works out, the power, the telephone wires will be moved over onto the electrical poles of Green Mountain Power and then the pole removed. So that, I, I feel that was a big, uh, something I've noticed for, you know, ten years or more, that would be nice if that were out of the way, so that.
Mark, is that the one I saw somebody working on down at Howard Square, Johnny's on the left-hand side? No?
Uh, no, the one I'm, uh, just talking about is, uh, just north of, uh, the Omen Speedway and across from the Andeburgs. House, when Andeburgs built their house, the power line went up one side and when Andeburgs built, they put a power pole on the opposite side next to the house and ran the power there and zigzags back across the road. So, there's like this single antique pole that's still got the telephone line on it. And from what I understand, it should have been moved years ago, but nobody's really talked about it, so it sounds like there's a good chance this may, um,
change.
Definitely. So I thought that was, uh, a good, you know, when you're winging snowbanks back or if you need a car with a, a big machine, it's very, very close. Mirrors, I, I'm sure have hit it many times over the years. Uh, I guess you've all probably noticed down here at Pat Booth's, uh, Wing Bridge, uh, there's a new driveway access that, uh, had gone in. And I'm gonna be, uh, in the future here, uh, doing some work with the guardrail, gonna set the guardrail back a little bit and, uh, to make a better entrance off the road into this new driveway. And I also am, am planning to order some, uh, new reflective arrow signs to put up on that same situation. Just upgrade since there's a new driveway and I feel it's time to do it. And I also have some other stuff that I'm working on throughout the, it'll be the rest of the winter, um, I'm doing a tree removal, uh, count, I'm lining up, uh, trees that should be addressed, um, that should come down, dead elm, uh, dead, just a number of dead trees. I also have, uh, a project that we want to do in the summer and, uh, there's a whole row of trees, when I say a whole row, it's like twenty trees in a row that I'd like removed. They're along the power lines and I've asked Green Mountain Power if there's anything that they will do for us and, um, the representative was gonna contact the, uh, the tree guy that they use to see how many of them they will remove. And the ones that they don't, um, I'm gonna put on the list and they may end up having to, uh, you know, this will be a contractor service, so it's, it'll be out of the budget. you know, this will be a contractor service, so it's, it'll be out of the budget, something that we have done before. So depending on the number of trees, it may be a big thing, but I know better once I get done tallying the tree count. And that's it for now.
Mark, I got one thing. The new poles, is Green Mountain gonna be putting new poles on the riverside of the road where we're gonna need to fix the, the road, you know, where it gets nasty after the red house in between my farm there?
Yep.
Are they gonna be putting poles on the riverside there?
I wasn't aware that they were going to. He didn't mention this and we, and we drew, we toured through and he didn't mention along the river. He did mention the stake in your, along, and what they're doing is that power line that goes up Harris Hill and then comes back, they're bringing that one down over Grasset Brook Road.
Yeah. I was just concerned because I, I saw like pink ribbon there and if they do put a pole on the riverside, chances are that it's gonna...
That's a survey for Mercedes.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah. I know it would just be in the way of the roadwork, but I guess it's...
Yeah, now, I know that they're, they're also upgrading poles in places that are just old and undersized and maybe ready to break, so you may see some stakes that are for that.
Okay.
But there was no mention of any great change of poles to do there.
All right, thanks, Mark. Okay, moving on to communications, email, actually something, Mark. So there's, I don't know if you saw this or got this, about this ash borer preparedness thing at the Newbrook next week?
Yep, I've actually been to, to one meeting there about the ash borer already and another one up north through the town.
I forwarded an email to you with that also.
Right. And I, I sometimes pick up information and read, but, but yeah, just to add a little bit to that, you know, it's just a matter of time, they say, before this ash borer reaches all of Vermont's ash trees. They say it's not gonna eliminate every single one, but the majority will be devastated. And, and what they want to make the towns aware of, like, it's the bigger towns, the cities, the more populated areas that have shade trees planted throughout their walkways in front of buildings and stuff. They're, they're trying to get people to start sooner than later, either taking down and replacing the ash trees with another species of tree, but just to make awareness of the cost that will be accumulated from having to remove ash trees in your neighborhood. The first thing they want, just when you're out checking your roads is count and see how many ash trees are affecting your roadways and to start making that plan. But, so I'm gonna, I'll try to make this meeting to see if there's anything new that's arisen. I know that it's been coming closer and closer to us, so I'm sure there's plenty of topic to learn at the meeting. But yeah, basically it's to get the ball rolling on what we're gonna do with the devastated trees.
Thank you for that. Another email that I got, which I'll pass around, is that, and I, I guess I have a question about whether we've had this meeting before. I don't honestly know who this person is, but they're somehow, I assume affiliated with the Strolling and Heifers, but the bike race, the Tour de Heffer, has changed its roots for this summer. The date of the race is June 7th. And there is now part of the route that comes up Putney Mountain and down Putney Mountain Road into Brookline and then on to Grasset Brook and over to Radway Hill and out to Route 30.
Really?
So have we ever had...
We, we've had some organizations that have, had asked us if we would do it. And the thing that we had to do, I think, as a town was to make sure that they had adequate insurance and so forth. It may be a question for the league to see what the town has to do because it, you know, it's obviously well-attended and the bottom line is you have cars and pedestrians. So the bottom, the, I think we should ask the Vermont League of Cities and Towns if, you know, what we need to do to assure that we're in compliance, that God forbid if something went wrong, if someone got hurt, are we covered or is it, you know? But I think the last time we did this...
It was for Walk Dot Man.
Right, but they, they supply certificates of insurance, they police the road and they mark the road off. I don't know what the Strolling of the Heifers are planning on doing, you know, that was pretty...
Can I ask you guys to put it on the list to reach out to the LCT about what we should be concerned with before we go back to them to ask for follow-up?
What is it, Tour of, Tour de Heffer?
Tour de Heffer, yep.
It's basically, it's a, I think it's a bike race that's in conjunction with the Strolling of the Heifers this weekend. I, I guess.
Yeah.
So as far as we're aware, their, their route has never brought them through Brookline?
No, it never has.
Anybody's aware of?
No, it never has.
Never heard of it.
No. And most people ask for permission...
Wild about, I guess I'll be taking the dog somewhere else on June 7th if that happens. Just don't go right by mine.
Well, and again, one of the questions, one of the questions...
She'll hear it and she'll freak out, but...
One of the questions I'm gonna pose for the league, does the town have the option of saying, "No, you cannot"?
Yeah, right. I mean, and I'm not necessarily saying we should do that, but I guess I don't know what they do as far as road control, traffic control and stuff like that.
I don't know.
At least warn it, at least signage. So doesn't make sense or...
Well, because people are going to be coming down Putney Mountain Road on a bike and exactly.
Yeah. I think there should just be some signs to tell people that are going up Putney Mountain in a car to be aware.
That's a nasty road to begin with.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if they...
I'll find out from the league, see what they say.
Yeah, let's, if you can, if you can just sort of...
And we'll find out from them. I think he needs this.
It's just sign, it's just kind of their verbal, they just put it on the...
So if he wants to call them to find...
Yeah, I'll see what they're...
See what they, what they're really planning, how do they, how do they sign it and, you know, after he talks to the LCT, he can talk to her.
I mean, roads are open for bicycle riding, but for racing, which this is racing or of that nature, it may fly...
It's an event.
It may be a little different.
Right. Okay, thank you for that. So yeah, if you can, see what you can find out. I mean, we actually have a little time to investigate it, but, I mean, it basically was just, like I say, I don't have any idea for this person. I mean, as soon as she's someone associated with them, it was just kind of like, I thought it was spam originally, but it turns out it was something, yeah.
Is that the one, no, is that, I thought...
No, it just, it literally just came to me.
Oh, okay, I forwarded something to you.
As far as I can tell, I'm not, I don't know if it was sent anywhere else, but. So the last email is, and I'll pass this around, it's basically, because I, I guess this didn't go to everyone, it's an update from Dot as, as a health officer on a visit and some work that she's done with the state police and some other people about the issue that Leigh Ann Johnson brought to our attention.
On Merrill Drive.
On Merrill Drive. So just a little bit of a follow-up on that, which sounds good. It sounds like the state release and their liaison person has gotten very involved and I thanked Dot greatly for her work on that. While that's going around, we'll also pass around some regular mail, which is, the first thing we have for regular mail is from the Restorative Community Justice of Southern Vermont, which is a pamphlet about their services and I think basically a letter of outreach that they can assist anyone that we may have contact with that would benefit from their services. I'll pass this around if I can put them back together now. Then we have something from the State of Vermont's Department of Taxes with a corrected equalization study results.
Yeah, basically they'd had the decimals in the wrong spot.
Oh, was that all the difference was?
Yeah.
Because we're the only towns going down in our taxes.
Um, I don't know, I haven't seen...
So the CLA is, is still at the same point, they just got it written wrong on the...
Yep. Now, CLA is 105.93.
Then we have something from the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, which is an announcement about a new round of funding and they also have a survey that they're asking us to complete to help them consider projects. We have a beautiful copy of the VLCT news, which looks fantastic as always. And then we received something from the Census Bureau, sort of confirming our contact information, which all looks correct as far as it's, it's got GAI and the P.O. Box. There is a, they're asking us to review the maps for accuracy, it looks like, and complete the form by March 1st. And I guess everything else in here are the maps, probably.
That was a, a map, I think, of Borders. Is that what that was?
Yeah, some boundary validation.
And I'm not, I'm not sure if that was a mandatory thing. I'd have to read that again or look at it again. It may be, you know, we get a lot of stuff where they ask us to do things, but they're not mandatory.
Well, you and I can look at this, it kind of looks like it's probably something that, yeah, one of us is supposed to fill it out if we can figure out what it is supposed to go out. Or pass it around so people can look at it and just... All right, and then coming behind that are the pay orders. While the pay orders and that last stuff is, I'll just kind of mention some agenda things for February 5th. We'll, we'll talk about the road equipment purchase and sort of discuss what a potential approach might be at this point, based on what we know. We'll talk about town meeting, wherever we might be at with needs for that. We have our annual state highway mileage form that we need to execute. We'll have that on the agenda.
I have sort of a curveball question, kink, that I meant to bring at the beginning of the evening, but I was late, so I forgot. I missed reviewing it at the agenda. How difficult is it or is it possible to move the day that we hold select board meetings? It's a day a week.
It's something that we discuss at the reorganization meeting.
No, I know, but I'm, so I, I...
We set it at, at the annual meeting.
I take classes because I'm going back for school and I do some bits like, but I am, I only have like one option for a class this semester and it's on Wednesday nights from like five to seven. It's the only one that works with my work schedule and is the least restrictive on time. So like there's other ones that just don't work with, they're several nights a week and that would make me less available for other things, like being able to go to other meetings and things like that. So I just didn't know if it's at all possible to even like in the interim, move the time from now until town meeting day otherwise. So it's either, it's either I take this, I take this opportunity and take the class that I need to take for my, and I've tried every which way of my advice to try and find a different class or a different offering, but barring not enrolling for, because I would miss the first three classes or whatever until the reorganization, I was wondering if there's any way to warn the meetings for the next couple of months for a different day of the week.
Well, you're talking for the next month though.
Yeah, yeah.
So you mean two meetings?
Well, in the reorganization, you said the, the times.
I wanted to skip that lab, that's just whatever, you can drop one, but I can't miss like three labs.
Of course not.
Well, I don't know if...
I didn't know if it was not potentially as simple as just warning those meetings for different days. And then if I'm still on the board after that date, then we could obviously at the reorganization meeting discuss that then, because it would go through, through May, so...
Right. So we have to, I mean, all we really have to do, I suppose, is vote to change the meetings for February to be something other than what they are.
No, I, I suspect you could do that because in the organization meeting, that's when you decided what days you were gonna meet, but to change that, I don't see...
Yeah, I mean, it's no, it's not any different, really, it's conceptually not any different scenario than what we did for January, which was we voted to set the meetings for January to be whatever and whatever, and then we put it on the calendar and post the agendas.
Does that mean a warning has to go out?
No, I don't, I think...
No, I mean, essentially we, the, the warning for the meetings is the agenda that we post on the website, basically. I mean, we do have details on the website that say that we're first and third, but, you know, for a couple of meetings, that's...
Anything can be changed, you know, it's just the...
So I guess the larger question would be, what could we settle on that is agreeable for those meetings?
The only thing is, I have some other people that...
Now, if we're...
Planning commission, the, I have meetings for the planning commission, I have the meeting house committee that have meetings, they have, you know, set days, so we'll have to be careful not to conflict with them.
Yeah, right. I don't know, I mean, do you want to suggest alternatives and we can just loosely discuss it and see where we...
You'd have to check the calendar.
Right, but I, I'm just saying if we don't do it now, it doesn't happen.
It won't happen.
So either, either we change it now or we get it to...
So, I mean, I can literally do any other day of the week, I just like can't do Wednesday. So, I mean, assuming we move back to, so we only edited January's schedule for January, so assuming we're on the first and third weeks of the month.
Yep.
So typically be a Wednesday, what happens on Tues, the first Tuesday and the first, and the third Tuesday of the month?
The fourth and the...
Tuesday.
Is that a scheduled meeting for...
Fourth and the 18th.
The fourth and the 18th. Speculate on those.
Yeah.
Do you have a conflict?
I'm working the 18th.
Tuesdays are super awesome for me.
Armed?
They are not.
Thursdays?
Thursdays would be one of them.
The Democrat committee meets on the first Tuesday of the...
What about Thursday, guys, the sixth and 20th?
I have a meeting on the 6th.
Okay.
So I can't do the 6th.
And you have a question Mondays? I'm assuming no one wants to do a Friday.
What time is your class?
Well, it's from five to... Well, it's from 5:00 to 7:30.
That takes care of that.
Oh.
On Wednesdays, um...
No, I thought it was, you know, somewhere we could move the meeting.
Yeah, just push the time or whatever, but, um, or what if we keep the second and fourth pattern? I mean, can anyone do?
In other words, do it on Wednesday?
Thursday, the 13th and Thursday, the 27th?
I can do, what'd you say?
Um, I can do the 13th.
And in keeping in mind, it's just obvi, it's obviously just until March and then we can figure it out from there. Because I only have one year, so, I mean, who knows what will happen on town meeting day? Who knows?
You have best two meetings.
You're not going anywhere for that.
You have best two meetings.
No, I mean, I don't, I said, I'm just saying, we could figure out the dates for February to have, you know, miss hopefully at least nine...
Well, I guess what, I think what Pete was just saying that if we just kept it...
Miss two meetings.
If we just kept it the regular time and then you just didn't, you know, show up.
Yeah, I'd say that'd be an interesting two meetings to not be a part of discussions for, especially like trying to be the point person on setting up town meetings.
Where's that horse?
Three and 17th, Monday.
Oh, Greenfield.
So Monday, the 3rd and the 17th, I guess I'll note the 17th is president's day, I don't know if that matters to anyone.
Yeah.
What, what are, what would the Monday, the 3rd and the 17th be like for people? Joseph is...
I would not be able to make the 3rd.
Okay, I know you.
I would be able to make the 17th, but I'm out of town until the 5th.
Oh, because you couldn't make the 5th either.
Oh, wait, you couldn't make the 5th either? Probably.
Probably not. I've got a flight, so maybe I'll make it, maybe not.
Okay, so you were going to be iffy, I mean, is that fair, that you, well, which you didn't mention before?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, like I said, I have, I have a flight on Wednesday, so if, if I make it in time, then I make it in time.
Right.
If not, but either way, I won't be here on the 4th or the 3rd.
Or the 3rd, okay.
I'm excited.
Right.
And 3rd, yeah.
What about Friday, 7th and 21st?
I hate Fridays, but it doesn't matter. No, I just, um, because I have to get here.
You serve us.
Well, that will go on.
Good thing you weren't close.
Uh, what are, what are Fridays like for you, Joseph?
Friday would work for me.
So Friday, the 7th and Friday, the 21st would work for you?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm on evenings starting in February, so I won't have any more. Wednesday night should be my only evening conference.
Bruce and Gwen, how would you be with Friday, the 7th and Friday?
We'd love one, Bruce. No, I'm fine.
I'm probably okay. 21 is 50/50 because there's a chance we might go away. But that hasn't been determined.
Okay. Uh, Peter, how about that?
I'm, I'm a little iffy about those, but...
Okay. And we can make alternatives to you. You're, I mean, now that we don't love your presence, but you're not a deal breaker.
That's good.
Uh, Guy, how do you feel about that?
That, I'll, I'll work it, you know.
I really appreciate you guys trying to work with me on this. I just really didn't, I wasn't super comfortable with the idea of not, like, not being even iffy.
You better show up the 7th and the 21st.
I will. I'll even bring you treats. I'll, I'll be safe.
If you wake up and said, if you all of a sudden took that 7:30 and you...
Okay, so anyway, so, um, okay, so Mark, how about for you, the 7th and the 21st, could you make those?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, can you all that? Um, uh, okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we set the meetings, the select board meetings for the month of February to be Friday, February 7th and Friday, February 21st, both still at 6:30 PM. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shelby. Any further discussion?
No, those are 6:30.
Same, yeah, same time, just, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of, um, sorry, I just realized I wrote 29 to none on this. Um, all those in favor of setting the select board meetings for the month of February to be Friday, February 7th and Friday, February 21st, still at 6:30 PM, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
That just means the video won't be posted until Monday or Tuesday because they're not open, they won't be open Saturday.
But we're gonna have to bring it to the studio on Monday.
Um, okay, so...
We're gonna come up like golden town even when they try to put a thousand dollar surplus.
Uh, so now looking at the Wednesday, or looking at Friday, February 7th is the agenda. So the highway mileage form, I mentioned town meeting, road equipment purchase, approach, something like that. Uh, any other agenda items that people can think of at the moment for that meeting? Which will be our next meeting.
Oh, uh, the building commission. We voted on it. It says position slash appointment.
Yeah, you know what, I shouldn't have, I, I shouldn't have actually said appointment because...
We'll wait to the...
Are we just gonna wait?
We're gonna, yeah, and that's the, yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know why I wrote appointment on there. That was a mistake. I think I copied and pasted from above and forgot to remove it basically.
Looks like, uh, Towns of Waters has raised the rates.
No, did she have to do some extra testing?
75 dollars for a decent amount of money.
Oh.
Did you move the pay orders?
What's that?
Did we move the pay orders?
Not yet, no.
Um, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll warrant 2020 dash 30, dated January 22nd, 2020, in the amount of $2,997. Is there a second?
Just second.
Second by Shelby. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving payroll warrants 2020 dash 30, dated January 22nd, 2020, in the amount of $2,997, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, now I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrants 2020 dash 29, dated January 21st, 2020, in the amount of $9,114.78. Is there a second? Second by Shelby again. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving accounts payable warrants 2020 dash 29, dated January 21st, 2020, in the amount of $9,114.78, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, those are all set. I would make a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Read your agenda.
You don't need a second.
We talked about it already.
That went right around me.
You're really greedy, huh?
Yeah, we, we talked about it before, we, we mostly talked about it before.
See, you have your second.
I'll second.
Uh, okay, uh, all those in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We're adjourned at 8:29.